I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Matt Tondle, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker is our Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Efferson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us, just right here. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore they'll be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on the case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remain on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they're made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and we did make a change to the consent cases. We have moved Agenda Item Number 16. We moved it off of approval, and we moved it over to layover. I believe, Dave, is that the only one? Okay. So we did move Agenda Item 16 from approval to layover. Now, I'm going to get ready. I'm going to read the consent cases. If you're here and you want to speak about that case, you have to stand up and let us know, and we'll take it off. If it's on for approval, that's your decision, or if it's on for layover, you can come down at another meeting and speak on the case at that time. But it's your decision. When I read the case, I'll ask if anyone wants that case removed. Okay, with that said, we'll get started. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-11-24-248. Applicant Lawrence Butler. It is on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District. This was laid over from our November 6th meeting of last year. Location: Northeast of Eighteenth and Locust Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-12-25-2. Applicant Metropolitan Entertainment and Convention Authority. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of smelter plant replat III, a minor plat inside city limits. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 401 Riverfront Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-18-78. C-12-18-79. Applicant Scrupa Investment Company. It is on for approval. Request: Revised preliminary plat approval of Privata lots 185 through 191, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU, along with a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Privata. Location: Northeast of Blue Sage Drive and Vinton Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fourteen, Case C-10-16-287. Applicant Havercamp Group, Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Avenue One. Location: 185 South 188th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-25-4. Applicant 108 Center Street LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 2009 South 7th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? That was Agenda Item Number Fifteen. Got it. And sixteen, I'll read when we get to the layovers. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-25-5. Applicant RSB Group LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R435 to R5. Location: 3960 North 36th Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eighteen, Case C-10-25-6. Applicant RSB Group LLC. Request: Rezoning from R435 to R5. Location: 6636 North 31st Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yes.
You do? Agenda Item Number Nineteen. I didn't mark that here, just a second. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-10-25-11. C-12-25. C-11-25-12. C-8-25-13. Applicant Tasty Pizza is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to NBD with approval of a PUR Plan Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, along with approval of a special use permit to allow restaurant drive-in in the NBD District. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Southeast of 49th Street and North Saddle Creek Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay. Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two. Case C-8-25-3. Applicant Helly Properties LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow automotive repair services in the L.I. District. Property is located within an MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: Northeast of 132nd and I Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, Case C-7-25-1. Applicant Christopher Sneer. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District. Location: 11045 Elm Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, Case C-7-25-22. Applicant Northwest Bank. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow financial services... Excuse me, sorry about that. Which one was I on, Dave? Twenty-five? Okay. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow financial services in the LO District. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 14607 California Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six, Case C-7-25-25. Applicant Exclusive Holdings LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow automotive repair services in the CC District. Location: 2410 South 140th Circle. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number...okay, those are the ones on for approval. Moving on to the layover. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-10-22-203. Applicant One Professional Square LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Antler View West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R7, and MU. This was laid over from the January 4th, 2023 meeting. Location: Southwest of 192nd Street and West Maple Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay. Now, it's on for layover. Okay, all right, we will remove that. Agenda Item Number Four. Case C-8-24-221. Applicant Creating Homes LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow transitional living in the R7 District. Laid over from our October 2nd, 2024 meeting. Location: 115 North 41st Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-10-25-14. C-12-25-15. Applicant Woodland Homes, Inc. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Sunrise, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northeast of 195th Street and Stone Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-25-16. Applicant 500 Skyline LLC. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Chancery Replat I, a subdivision inside and outside city limits with rezoning from AG, DR, and CC to AG, DR, MH, and CC, along with expansion of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. Portions of the property are located within the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay Districts. Location: Northwest of Skyline Drive and West Dodge Road. Anyone wish to have this removed?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to remove eleven, and we'll take twenty-four with it. So both eleven and twenty-four will be removed. I'm going to go ahead and read twenty, and then I'll go back and catch sixteen. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-10-25-24. Applicant Community Health Development Partners. It is on for layover. Request: Rezoning from R535 to HI. Location: Northeast of 28th Avenue and Deer Park Boulevard. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. And I'll go back and catch Agenda Item Number Sixteen, which has been moved to layover. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-10-92-239. Applicant ILD Lakeside LLC. It is on consent for layover. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Lakeside Plaza. Location: Northeast of 175th Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. We're done with those that were on consent. Do I have any motion for the cases that were on consent for approval?
I'll try to get this right. Motion to approve cases number three, nine, thirteen, fourteen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Yeah, that's what I have. Kathy, we have a motion and a second. Please read the roll call.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Okay, do we have a motion for the cases that were left on for layover?
A motion to layover Agenda Items Number Four, Ten, Sixteen, and Twenty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please read the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Okay, so those cases that were left on consent, no further action will be taken. We thank you for coming down. You are welcome to stay. It is fine if you choose to leave, but no further action will be taken on those cases that were left on consent. I'm going to take the ones that were removed from consent. I'm going to do the ones that were removed on approval first, and then we'll move over to the ones that were left on consent for layover. Dave, I'm showing number fifteen would be our first one. Okay. I'm going to reread this one. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-10-25-4. Applicant 108 Center Street LLC. It was on for approval. It was removed. Request: Rezoning from GC to R7. Location: 2009 South 7th Street is the applicant here. I'm going to come forward, sir. Please give your name and address, and if you want to address anything about your request, that's fine. If not, that's up to you.
Sure. Yuri Pascar, 1910 South 44th Street, Omaha 60105. Currently have a home. It's in a general commercial zoning. We've identified the ability to...sorry. This parcel, we can get three townhomes on here and stay within the R7 zoning. We're currently zoned as general commercial, which doesn't fit a single-family home. We'd like to increase the housing stock here in Omaha, and this is one way we can do it. So that's what we did, fill out a rezoning application to downzone from GC to R7.
I couldn't hear your first name. Did you say Gary?
Yuri Pascar. Yuri.
Gary?
Yep.
Jerry?
Yuri. Yep.
Yuri, okay. All right. Are there any gar...Yuri?
Yes.
Are there any garages with these?
Yes, our plans call for a two-car garage per home, so each house will have its own two-car garage and additional parking.
All right, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hello, my name is Jessica.
Jessica, can you try pulling both those microphones together? That might...
Like that? Is that better?
It's better.
Okay.
Jessica?
Jessica Lackner. I live at 2002 South 7th Street, which is right across the street from what he's proposing, and the answer is no. We are already overcrowded in this neighborhood with parking. There are...is it an apartment complex on Eighth Street that they park down Cedar and on Seventh? We were told these Dahman Row townhomes that are built opposite on the north side was also supposed to have parking garages underneath these thirty-eight units that they're building. However, it's so small, all of these people park on the streets. They park on both sides of the streets so garbage men cannot get through. You try to put your garbage containers out, people will push them over. My property retaining wall has been destroyed because of all the parking. There is no parking, driveways, and if there are, they're only indicated for one vehicle because it's an older neighborhood. And then looking at what this is proposed, they want to go entirely to the south for this rezoning, which would take down these other rental houses, and they'd be allowed to do the same thing. And I'm asking you to please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Kelly Enriquez. I live on 2003 South Eighth Street. It's kind of up the street of where this project is planning to take place, but I also oppose this plan. I feel that it'll just negatively impact the neighborhood. The parking is already an issue. I feel that even just building these, I feel like that could make everything, like the housing, more...less affordable, and I feel that we should just leave the neighborhood how it is and not plan to build upon what's already there. I feel that if they want to have a positive change there, I feel that they should just leave it as a single-family unit, because just adding more to it will just cause more problems, like the parking issue. So I vote for no, not having this project be moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'll...did you raise your hand? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Yuri, did you want to come up and give your name and address again, please?
Yuri Pascar, 1910 South 44th Street. The proposed project has all the parking contained on our parcel. Each home would have its own two-car garage, so I'm...we're not trying to add any extra parking anywhere else. If we don't pencil the project out, downzoning from general commercial down to R7 and keeping the single-family home as it is would be uniform to the neighborhood because everyone else around me is R7, but I happen to be GC, and we have no intentions on redeveloping this site to a GC standard, so...
Yuri, I had a question for you.
Yes.
You had mentioned when you were first up that the site was going to have garages?
Is that... Yes.
That's a little bit different than the site plan that staff and the Board members have, that would all be surface parking off the alley, so I guess, could you clarify?
Yes, that's correct. So we submitted original plans with twelve parking stalls on the property. We have a new site plan that includes three two-car garages, so each townhome will have its own two-car garage.
Do you have that with you?
I can email it to you, or...
That's okay. I was just going to say you could put it up on the screen, but if you don't have it...
I might be able to, if you give me a second.
It's okay.
Okay. I'd be happy to email this to you. I know going to City Council, if it moves along, and I'll have the plans and the blueprints for City Council.
Do you need to see that plan before...okay, all right. Thank you, Yuri. Any additional comments or questions?
We can move this along if that's the way the Board goes, but is there something that we have to put in there saying, instead of twelve stalls, where there's going to be parking garages?
No, this is a straight rezoning request, so a site plan is not locked down. Now, it's good to have all the best and available, you know, current information. The site plan that you have in your packet does show twelve surface stalls off of the alley, which is more than meeting, you know, code requirements for the three townhome units. So I would encourage the applicant to provide that to staff before it goes to City Council so that we can include it with the documentation, but the rezoning request does not lock down a plan, and so we would be comfortable, in fact, even if, you know, we're not approving or doing anything with waivers with the rezoning request, so I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Eric? Yeah, I guess I would just add that the downzoning from GC to R7, while the master plan for this area does designate low-density residential, the majority of properties within this neighborhood are zoned R7 or GC. GC does allow townhomes with a conditional use permit, but the applicant decided to pursue the rezoning instead, with either option would have been acceptable. This is a downzoning, so that is in more conformance with the master plan. You know, we would encourage the neighbor to try to continue to meet with neighbors, but, you know, townhome isn't allowed use in both GC and R7, and we are supportive of the rezoning. So staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from GC to R7.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondle?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Okay. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-10-25-5. Applicant RSB Group LLC. It was on for approval, been removed. Request: Rezoning from R435 to R5. Location: 3960 North 36th Avenue. Is the applicant here?
Hi, my name is Cal Cox, 2967 Martha Street, proposing a duplex at this location. We looked at doing single-family. The finances didn't really work out, so we looked at doing a duplex. This would be four off-street parking on the back of the property, so nothing would be up front. Standard duplex, that'd be a stacked duplex. First floor would be all accessible, so the reason we're doing stacked duplexes is to make sure that the first house...the first floor is completely accessible for wheelchairs, everything like that. The second floor would be all self-contained in terms of the stairs and everything. It would all be in the interior, but the second floor would be non-accessible, so that way we could meet the demands for housing. So that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Shane Hankins, and I purchased a property...my name is Shane Hankins and live at 4912 South 86th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, and purchased a property about three years ago. Grew up in the area and born and raised, and... and I have a sister that is, that was, that was born disabled, so I do a lot of things that is with affordable housing and accessibility. My goal is to make, as Kale said, the first unit one-hundred percent accessible all throughout, no lips, even from, from street to the bathroom, one-hundred percent wheelchair accessible, and goal is just to make more affordable stock in the area.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Thank you.
You bet.
I represent the whole neighborhood.
Name and address, please.
Excuse me, my name is Thomas Weiner, I'm at thirty-nine fifty-two North Thirty-Sixth Avenue, Omaha. I live, I live one house away from the lot. It's a corner lot. I owned the lot at one time, seven years ago, and they told me that I couldn't build on it, so I sold it back to the person that I bought my house from, who was in the pool with the lot, and I sold it back to him for two thousand dollars. Well, I've met this guy before, about three years ago, he wasn't upkeeping his lawn, and they had-
Who?
The guy, the black guy that just came up here.
Shane?
I believe so.
Okay.
Okay, and he didn't upkeep the lot, so he was, I believe, was ticketed deport. Well, I have a little six-year-old, and we're right across from the North High, and it's right at the bottom of the hill, North High, and we're a pretty bad area. And this neighborhood, seven years ago, when I moved in, was nothing but people that have lived there for thirty, forty years. There's fifteen of them that have lived there, the same street, and there's a church right there, too. This corner lot's right across from the North High, and this guy here seems to be, says he's a contractor, well, three months ago, four months ago, back in September or August, he parked a trailer, and I've got, there's, there's pictures of it. He parked a trailer in the front of the lot, right in front of it, by the front of the street, and he knows it's illegal. You gotta have a cement pad to park a trailer there. He's got two of them there. He's got one at the back of the lot, and one at the front of the lot. Now, why he put it in the front of the lot, I think he wanted the neighborhood to keep an eye on it. Well, he didn't even go around to introduce himself. That's the first thing I did when I got into this neighborhood, is I went around and introduced myself to the, to the people. That's how I've become friends with all of them. And if we put a duplex there with people that, that don't, that aren't invested in the, in the neighborhood, it's going to be like every other property that has been rented out in that area, being trashed, and I'm telling you, this neighborhood, if you go by it, is the best neighborhood in that area, because of the people. Now, he wants to bring in people that don't, aren't invested in this neighborhood, that don't, that don't care, and I've seen it before, because I've got four rentals of my own. But he's on the wrong foot by saying, by putting that trailer out front illegally. I've already contacted, I contacted the zoning, or the code enforcement, four months ago, they told me, they had to give him three weeks, they had to go ahead and citation him, which they said they did. He hasn't moved it yet, it's been four months, plus, he wants us to watch it for him. And all these North High kids that come by there during the summer, not when it's cold, are sitting behind his trailer, smoking pot and cigarettes, and it's just a nuisance. And that's what's going to happen to this property, if you allow him to build on this property, and you'll destroy all these people's places they live. And these are people that have been there thirty or forty years, so please, don't let him build there. You didn't let me, so why let him build there? Especially in this neighborhood. These people are content, they're happy, they have no problems, even though they're surrounded by nothing but criminals and, and bad people and things that are happening, shootings, everything. This is what he's going to have come to this property? Because he's already showed me that he can't take care of the property, he's already showed me that he's illegal by putting that trailer there, even though he's been, people, the code people have already contacted him to move it. He's got it on stands that are sinking into the dirt? Now, why wouldn't he think of that if he wants to go ahead and put a property there? And why wouldn't he go around and talk to the, the people that live there to say, hey, I'd like to build a house, so what do you think? Do you think it'd be okay? I make sure I'll have, I'll vet the people, I'll make sure that they have good credit, so that I know that they're going to pay there and take care of the property, but he hasn't done any of that. So, please, don't let him build there.
I got, I got a question, I got a question for you. Why, what were you told the reason was that you couldn't?
Zoning, something to do with the zoning. I'm a contractor, I got cancer about two years ago, so I haven't been contracted.
So, you didn't want to rezone it, to the proper zone?
I didn't want to have to go through the hassle, but it was cheap enough, he probably got the property for two thousand.
That's all I need to know, thank you.
Okay. Sorry for ranting.
Any other opponents?
There was supposed to be, there was supposed to be like fifteen people coming.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get the, can I ask you, did you get the, they said they did a petition together, did you get that? The lady's got it. I'm sure she's either late or something happened, but they got a petition, asking me not to, to go ahead and let him build.
Thank you, Thomas. Since there aren't any other opponents, I'm going to close the public hearing. Shane, did you want to come up and address? Or Gil also?
And I'd like to ask why he has an-
Hey, Thomas?
I'm okay with any question.
Yeah. Tom?
Your name again?
Shane Hankins, forty-nine-twelve South Eighty-Sixth. I was once one of those kids at North High, behind the area, spoken we, that was me. My only goal is to create more safe, clean, affordable places for people like me, that was once homeless, mom was on drugs. This man here raised me. That's all I'm asking. The trailer, there was, I can, there was people dumping stuff on the lot. I did purchase the property for roughly about twenty-five hundred. I have removed two trees at six grand each. I have removed other trees. I have about fifteen thousand into the lot, and it's only worth two thousand. I have put the camper there to put cameras up to catch somebody dumping on the property. A lot of those lots and properties in that area are dumped on, trashed, my goal is just to clean it up and put affordable housing, that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address a couple of things as well. It's a vacant lot.
Sure, Neil, go ahead.
My name's Kale Cox, two-nine-six-seven Martha Street. It's a vacant lot, I agree, the neighborhood's great, and in terms of where it's at, you've got North High right there, you've got the YMCA, you've got the library down the street, you've got a lot of things that are in that area, but you also have a vacant lot that's sat there for years. I did talk to the neighbor that's directly south of that property, she expressed concerns about the trees, and we had them removed the next month. I've already gone to the planning board of appeal, the zoning board of appeals, which you're right, it does take effort, and, and it's going to take effort to get some of those properties set up within Omaha. We're not talking about, you know, throwing in a tent, we're talking about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar development for two properties, two, two units. One is going to be, like I said, completely accessible, I think it's what the city needs. In terms of opposing it just for, just for the sake of opposition, it doesn't seem like it's a good use of the property, doesn't seem like it's a good fit for the city, and at the end of the day, it really comes down to a choice. Do you want a vacant lot that's going to sit there for indefinitely, that, that none of the concerns are being addressed? In terms of getting in the neighborhood, I apologize, I'll get out there more, happy to answer your questions.
Anything else you want to add?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So, I have a question for Mr. Cox and Mr. Hankins, or, maybe I missed it, are either of you the owner of the property?
Shane.
Okay, Shane, come up, please.
Yes.
So, the address of the property is listed at a Lincoln address, that's your LLC?
So, I used to live in Lincoln, I've lived in both. I currently live in Omaha. When I started up, so I did the big renovations at UNL Stadium, and it was a two-year project, so during that time, lived in Lincoln, and now started a development off Forty-Eighth and Dodge, and then moved back. So, as a lot of contractors, if you're working out of town, or when I lived in Minnesota, I moved to Minnesota. I can provide my address, my-
That's okay, that's okay.
Okay.
What is your response to the notice of violation that you've been issued by the city on November eighteenth?
I did not see it. My guess is that it went to the Lincoln address. I, I did not, but I can get it moved, it takes me hooking up to my truck and moving it, not-
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Because of the address this owner is Lincoln, pretty sure it went to that address.
Okay, that's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from the board?
Eric? Yeah, based on the information that I received from other divisions of the planning department, including the notice of violation that was issued on November eighteenth, it is a Lincoln address, but it goes to the property owner of record, we're going to change our recommendation report to layover, to allow the remedy, and to address the violation.
Okay. Any questions?
Before, sorry, quick comments, I don't know the history, what conversations were had about previously buildable, not buildable. There was a recent code change within the last three or four years that adjusted the lot width requirements within R-five to forty feet, so there have been some zoning code changes that, that could go into play of whether it was previously buildable, as it was previously zoned, or is right now, I'm just speculating, but there, there has been a small change that could have impacted that. And then regarding the zoning board of appeals, that waiver will no longer be effective, that was for a single-family home, so if a duplex is being built, the applicant would need to go back to the zoning board of appeals. So, with all that being said, staff recommends layover.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero?
Agenda item number eighteen, case C-ten dash twenty-five dash six, applicant RSB Group LLC, it was on approval, it was removed, request rezoning from R-four thirty-five to R-five, location sixty-six thirty-six North Thirty-First Avenue. May I hear, hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Kale Cox, two-nine-six-seven Martha Street, same situation. This is two lots, but they're divided, so essentially it would be two duplexes, same situation. First floor would be accessible, two parking lots, two parking spaces in back per unit, so the total of four per unit, which exceeds the standard, four-bedroom per unit, first floor zero entry, so same thing, it's just looking for approval to do a duplex.
Are you, are you, you're not the owner?
Shane, we're part, we're business partners.
Okay, so what's your role in this, in this property, then?
Project management, and-
You're going to, you're a contractor?
Shane is the, Shane and I are business partners on it, so we would own the company, we would own these together.
Got it, okay, thanks.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents?
Proponent of four to approval, same as before. I'm sorry, sorry about that. Shane Hankins, forty-nine-twelve South Eighty-Sixth, Omaha, for approval, like, I have a long history vested in, just very vested in North Omaha, really just putting my money where my mouth is at, and the goal is just to provide safe, affordable, accessible housing.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Hi, I'm Jessica Oswald, six-five-four-two North Thirty-Second Street, Omaha. I oppose the two-two-story duplex, however, I'm not opposed to a one-two-story duplex. I don't think there's sufficient room for two. So, and focusing on one would allow for greater attention to design and quality. A single duplex can provide ample personal space and better access to the outdoors. The current layout lacks sufficient natural light. Adding more windows and creating outdoor areas where tenants can walk, relax, read, and play could significantly benefit mental health. Access to natural light, fresh air, and green spaces, as most of us know, has proven to boost serotonin and dopamine levels, improving mood and fostering relaxation. Personal space and access to the front and backyard are vital for mental well-being, particularly in low-income areas. These features are not just desirable, they are essential to helping a community thrive, and since that is what the applicant wants to do, I hope they'll consider that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opponents?
Hello, my name is Scott Crechy, I am a resident at sixty-five thirty North Thirty-First Avenue. First and foremost, I live two houses down from the vacant lot. I do believe that something needs to occur with that vacant lot, the downed trees there. I believe I may have seen you out there taking care of the trees that have fell over the last couple storms we've had, so the, the lot does need some upgrade and upkeep and everything like that, but I do concur that having two, two duplexes there will cause a little bit of congestion. I'm also very concerned about the design of the, of the duplexes. I believe you said very good outline of why two duplexes wouldn't work. My home myself is a very established neighborhood, it's an older neighborhood, I have a beautiful brick house just two doors down, great Spanish tile, it's a beautiful house. House, I'm very concerned that's starting to build another establishment, two duplexes right down the street from there would impact the property value, the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I'm also very concerned about the parking. I do appreciate, the city did just put, implement no parking in the back alley, I understand there will be parking available for the duplexes, which I do appreciate, but I am concerned since that is a corner lot, the angle of trying to get into that alley to where you would park will be problematic. We already have issues with the street parking there, up and down the street, we do have three churches in the area that causes congestion alone. At any Friday with the recycling and the waste removal, you can just hear the horns blowing from the, the waste management trying to navigate that alley, trying to navigate the, the street parking there, so I am concerned that the additional parking may not be sufficient, especially when you start to get to two, three, four families there, so I am concerned with the additional street parking. I do not believe that if you were even to implement no parking on that side of the street, this is an established neighborhood. My house is almost one-hundred years old. It is narrow streets, and it is of a lot of congestion already there, so even though I do appreciate putting some form of parking there, I just cannot see an additional two to three, four residents there. I'm also deeply concerned about the type of residents. As spoke before, the gentleman's stated that this is in his first attempt that he also has, this is news to me, that he's also trying to build duplexes in another area, so this doesn't, I echoed the gentleman from behind me earlier when he says, maybe it's not the best intentions for that property. There's something that needs to be done with that lot, I'm fully prepared to offer you a proposal for that lot and purchase it myself. It's a beautiful lot that does need to take some care with the trees that are currently down, it's, does, it is a little disrepair. Happy to take that off your, your plot, off your hands to help with that, but we do need to do something with the lot, but I just do not believe moving from a single-dwelling neighborhood and adding those additional resources, those additional duplexes is really in the best interest of the neighborhood. Another thing I'm concerned about is the timing of the proposal. The information we received was just a couple weeks ago, so over the Christmas holiday season, I went out and talked to a lot of the neighborhood residents and everything like that, a lot of the residents, no fault of anybody's own, I may have missed it in the mail, too, had I not just happened to be looking at, you know, published clearinghouse, who won the million dollars, and I stumbled upon it when I was renewing my pet license and what have you, and so when I opened it, so I have went around the neighborhood and I have started discussing this, no one is in favor of this, no one, but I do also recommend, or I request, if it's denial of this zoning change, maybe a stay so I can continue to talk to the neighborhood neighbors, have them provide more information, show up here, because it was short-term, this was a really short notice for myself and other neighbors, but none of them support this, but I understand me saying that the neighbors don't support this is different than actually having the entire neighborhood show up. I'm very happy that other individuals in the neighborhood did show up, but I assure you, if a little bit more time to discuss, we can have more individuals arrive here to- we can have more individuals arrive here to show their displeasure of trying to zone that. Once again, I'm not in disfavor of trying to do something with that lot. I really do believe keeping that as a single property dwelling is really in the best interest of the neighborhood. It's, once again, it's an established neighborhood, historic neighborhood, full of one-house, single-family dwelling houses. Once again, I just appreciate a little bit more time so I can make a little bit more articulate case why the zoning wouldn't be in the best interest of the neighborhood. But I'll stay right there, and once again, I do thank you for showing up in our neighborhood as well. But once again, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Scott. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Shane, did you want to come up?
Yes. I would like to speak on my intentions of...
Name and address again.
Sorry. Again, Shane Hankins, forty-nine twelve South Thirty-sixth Street, Omaha. Would like to speak on my intentions, which was brought up. So my intentions are one-hundred percent pure, and if I can shed light on a little bit of like the finances of it, of building, of building a single-family house in an area that the comps are only one-fifty, one-twenty, one-hundred. Some of the houses are, on both areas are only valued at like eighty thousand to where a single-family house to build will be two-hundred, two-fifty, and which rents will be twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred, with interest rates at six, seven, eight percent. So the goal would be to get that down and stay above the AMI of affordable housing, which is, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen hundred, which in my opinion is still a lot for somebody who really can't afford it, to be able to afford that. The intentions is just to get the cost down, get it rented out, and then provide affordable housing. Yes.
Two individuals brought up with regards to the size. What is the footprint of each floor?
Footprint of each floor is, the ceilings are eight foot.
What's the total square footage area of?
Square footage?
Square footage of each floor?
Each floor's square footage is, if I am getting close, twelve to thirteen hundred. Yep, thirteen hundred. So you have a twenty, twenty-six by fifty, if I'm correct. So twenty-six wide, the lots are...
Fifty by twenty-six?
Yes, so the lots are fifty. By code, you can have five on each side. We're given about, what would that be? We're given seven, so we're smaller than what code would be, and...
So thirteen hundred square foot in each, on each level, so twenty-six hundred square feet on a fifty-four hundred square foot lot? Six thousand is perfect. Okay, so I need, thanks.
Shane, Shane, did you guys have a meeting with the neighbors, letting them know ahead of time? Get together, let them know what you planned on doing? Give them some drawings, talk to them?
The, so, no. The goal, and I just, I purchased it within the last six months, and the whole time I've been taking down trees, getting it cleaned up, we had a big tree storm. I did it on all the properties that I own, and just timing with Christmas, just spending a lot of money on, feel like money's going down a drain, is what it feels like. Just because I know the investments in the ARV of the properties around it.
To do more of these, it's really important to include that neighborhood. Just this board historically, it's been really important for us to hear that. So we're just telling you for your, I hope you do a lot of these, but just as you guys think about this, it's important to do that.
As you can tell, we're new at this.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not, not trying to hide that fact. Extremely new at this, and as that, those feedbacks are given, absolutely.
Shane, what was the, what's your target tenant look like? You've got two four-bedroom, you know, you've got four-bedroom floor plates that are quite large. Tell me a little bit about...
So my target tenant, so I...
What kind of targets?
I built the exact same property in Lincoln, one floor, and target tenant is a single mom, multiple kids, or somebody on the first level that's disability, that's disabled. I was raised by my grandparents and then eventually was in foster care, went to Boystown, raised by him. Would be somebody that is of, that is older, that has taken in their kids due to family situations. That's why the first level is affordable, not affordable, but ADA accessible. Just due to, you know, somebody's age and their ability to be, to move around, that is the target tenant.
Kind of what I'm getting at too is just, you know, if it was four single people with cars and things like that, that would be different, and so I'm just trying to get an idea of what the target...
Absolutely, I understand.
...demographic is there, so appreciate that.
Real quick too, Cal Cox, twenty-nine sixty-seven Martha. Just wanted to fill you guys on a couple of things. One, you're right, should have had neighbor involvement, apologize for that. This is new, so this is something that we've decided to do, and basically it kind of came up from our history. So I was a family teacher at Boystown for a long time, my wife and I were there. Shane was one of our kids, and we were talking basically about, and then I was foster parent after that. So basically, this whole thing came up with talking about, I'm really into woodworking, Shane's in construction, and then basically what we could do to get back. I've never lived, well, except for Boystown, I've never lived further than Forty-first and, Forty-first Street, further west. So everything's been east, I love it. My sister's in a wheelchair as well, Shane's sister's in a wheelchair, and we basically just talked about what we can do to make things a little bit better, especially for infill lots. I went through the land bank, I forget the name of it, the ambassador program for that. And so basically, the entire thing is to look for infill lots that currently don't have any vacancies. Everything you've stated in terms of mental health is a hundred percent correct. My wife's a therapist, we worked at Boystown for a long time. Hundred percent agree in terms of making sure that they're accessible, making sure that you have access to certain things. So each property has a covered porch on the front, no parking in the front because it didn't want to affect like the neighborhood feel that you typically get in the older homes area. So all the things that have been said are a hundred percent correct. Really, it's on us that we didn't do a better job of advocating and making sure that people are educated for it. Happy to do that in the future, but that's where this whole thing came from. Like the land bank work, the work within, you know, foster care and Boystown and everything else, all of it kind of came back to the same thing. There's a missing middle problem within Omaha, within everywhere basically. And the missing middle would be defined as duplexes, fourplexes, triplexes, things like that, where you have ADUs, where you have different accessibility for housing that could be more affordable, family-oriented, like I'm not, I wouldn't be opposed to adults or something like that, but really the goal is for parents, specifically anybody with, especially with accessibility issues. My sister, basically, they had to leave, they went and built a home, because it's really hard to find. So the design is all focused on those same principles, you know, making it affordable, making sure the roof lines are simple, making sure that there's a covered porch in front or parking in the back, making sure that each of the rooms are solid size, making sure that they're well insulated, all those basic principles. But it really just comes down to the same thing, which is, I'm not a professional builder, I have another career, but the whole point is just making sure that we can address the missing middle, that we can work on the infill lots, and that we can make the area better, so that's it. But one-hundred percent valid that, yeah, we kind of, we a hundred percent should have done more in terms of educating the neighbors on the, the reason, especially the story behind it.
Shane, one of you had construction background, right?
Shane's a GC.
Oh, you're a GC, okay.
And so I've done, I've done a lot of remodeling, I've worked on everything, like I rebuilt my entire house with, you know, fully permitted and everything, so... Shane would be building it. Yeah, so mine is more focused on the design, and then it'll be after we, after we actually build them, to maintain and hold. So the goal is not to, to build and sell, it's to build and maintain.
Okay, thanks.
Good, you.
Appreciate it.
Any additional comments or questions?
Eric? Yeah, so I think it's important, I think we got a little bit into the weeds there. You know, this isn't a use permit, it's not a PUD, it's not a PUR. It's whether the rezoning, whether the zoning change is master plan compliant or not, and this is. So I know the board members know this, but just briefly for the benefit of the audience who don't come down here every month, with the master plan, you have different categories. You have low-density residential, high-density residential, office, commercial, industrial, open space, things like that. Low-density residential is defined by the R-five or below zoning district, so the proposed zoning change from R-four to R-five is master plan compliant with the low-density residential for this neighborhood. The size of the property, the size of the lots, can each fit a duplex without any waivers. So to staff, it's pretty clear-cut. You know, I just noticed on the site plan, there's some gravel, parking area that would not be allowed, so I just want to just throw that out there, but we're not locking the site plan down with this process, so staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion, a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondle? Sotolongo? Moore? Morris? Pete? Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve seven to zero.
Mine show that we're done with those that were on for approval, we're at the layover. Agenda item number two, is that correct, guys?
I'm sorry, I was the one who proposed for layover on number two, and this was my meeting, and we actually wanted to discuss this, but that was a mistake, we not layover.
Let me go through the process, I'll bring you up.
Or you don't have to speak on it, it could just, it could just kind of, just go through fast. So if you choose not to speak on it, but we do have to, we do have to go through the procedure and the vote now that's been pulled off. Thank you.
Agenda item number two, case C ten dash twenty-two dash two oh three, C twelve dash twenty-two dash two oh four. Applicant One Professional Square LLC, it was on for layover. Request preliminary plat approval of Antler View West, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DRR seven and MU. This was laid over from the January fourth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Location southwest of one ninety-second Street and West Maple Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Joe Detlows with TD two, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road, here representing the applicant, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Any other proponents? Seeing none of their any opponents?
Hi, my name is Brooke Nowak, I live at three-one-one-two North One ninety-fourth Street in Elkhorn. Our house is four lots down from the proposed development, and we, our house backs onto the creek that runs through this, and about, I think it was two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, they did a erosion project on the creek that ends on our property line. And with the rain events that have happened in the past year, our creek is now eroding into our property line. And we're just concerned with this going from agriculture to development, what the erosion will end up being on our property line and the creek. And this is, I have, because we have erosion problems currently, and so this is my contractor, Dave Hill, who understands it better, so.
My name's David Hill, I'm from fifty-six Main Street, Welcome, Minnesota. I went and looked at the project, they have some... Brooke told me when they bought the property, the backyard sold it. I mean, they got some huge trees, I measured one, it was twenty-two foot in diameter. And so when you sit at the table, the backyard is really nice.
Twenty-two in diameter?
Yeah. It is now a quarter eroded. The creek has moved underneath it. The restoration project stopped right on the north side of their property, and nobody's fault, it's just, that's where it stopped. When it goes onto their property, we need to do more work. Now, when she showed me this projected project, we're gonna, we're gonna go from a soil, I'm not against the project. We're going from a soil-based agriculture to a hard-surface commercial. And there is a retention pond there. There is, there is a runoff structure. Everything looks good, but once you, once you get a major rain event, then you have issues, and it comes faster. And I deal with the DNR and Soil and Water Division in Minnesota in our area. And so what I see, there's nothing wrong, but it's going to come faster. And to protect their backyard is, their home is, is very nice. And the backyard for me is nicer. And I just want to protect that, and... Yes.
The project itself, is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
So Brooke, and maybe you can come back up.
Yes.
Has the issue, have you addressed the issue with NRD?
Well, sorry, actually, it just, we really just noticed it this winter, and then we got this letter. So I thought we would come here first, and before we...
Because there's going to be a lot more projects going on along West Maple Road, as you know, if you live in that area.
Yes.
It's going to be just like this one.
Yes, and, well, this is for the particular creek that we adjut, everything, because Indian Creek Golf Course is on the other side, so we get Indian Creek. So really, this is the last parcel of land that will really get developed of agriculture that backs to our particular creek.
You get, it's quite a distance from your, I see, I'm looking at the map here, there's, you got a distance between your creek area there and this development.
Okay. Yeah, it's just...
Well, it's four lots away, is what I counted.
I'm looking at the creek here.
So where, where is your lot?
We are the...
Do you want me to walk it up and show you?
Yeah, just, I mean, from this development, are you east-west?
We are south, we're on one ninety-fourth Street, we are the fourth lot, south.
I thought you said one eighty-four.
Oh, we're ninety-fourth, so we're at this, we're at the west side of the agriculture.
We know there's going to be a retention area in there for all this runoff from this site, we'll go into that detention spot.
Correct, and we're just, we're very concerned that with a major rain incident, it's going to further the issue. Is there, is there something or somebody we can talk to? Because we're gonna have to go across other people's property to deal with this.
Eric, and, did you want to address that now, or? Yeah, he'll, he'll address that here in a few minutes.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you.
Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Joe, did you want to come up and address anything, or?
Sure, so, yes, there is a retention, sorry, Joe Detlows, one oh eight three six Old Mill Road. There is currently a retention pond in the southwest corner of the site, which is designed to handle the R-seven lot and the public improvements. All the other mixed-use lots will have their own storm water retention or detention systems, and we abide by these cities' regulation to handle the two-year, ten-year, and one-hundred-year runoff, so there shouldn't be any excess water seen, so.
Development could be a plus for them, if the retention, your post-construction storm water maintenance plan may be a plus in Brooke's favor.
Correct, because we'll, we'll address kind of the outlet structures. There'll be maintenance that needs to be done there, so there'll be, you know, eyes on it to make sure there's, you know, there's any erosion. We'll put some erosion protection at the discharge structure, but, and then there'll be annual inspections on that to make sure it's in good working order.
Joe, would you be willing to connect with the, with the home? Joe, would you be willing to connect with the, with the homeowner here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just kind of give some reassurance there?
Sure.
Did you want to say anything else, Joe?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments or questions? We'll hear from Eric. Eric?
Yeah, so the City of Omaha Public Works Department does have stormwater requirements for treatment and retention, just kind of like Joe was touching on, I'm not an engineer, but we can get you in contact. There's a gentleman in the back, right back there, Ryan raised his hand, he's a traffic engineer, but he could get you a name or a few names in the Public Works Department just to kind of, just to talk through some of that. Yes, it does look like your lot has some challenges. The way that property was set up, the drainage way was not, when your neighborhood was platted, sorry, I believe it was under the City of Elkhorn's jurisdiction, it was not placed, the drainage way was not placed within an outlot, which would have provided more separation, which could have helped the situation. Instead, your lot and your neighbors' lots go further into that drainage way or that area that, that's not the way it's typically done now, that could have helped. Now, I recognize and, you know, several, several staff in Public Works work on this all the time, there are certain drainage ways that have erosion problems in our jurisdiction, in our city, and it is a challenge, it's expensive, we coordinate with the NRD on potential fixes with that, so there's no simple answer. But I can stress that this new development would have to abide by the rules that are put in place and follow those requirements. In fact, that is one of the reasons, the primary reason for the layover is that we need additional information on the stormwater treatment. And so, you know, I encourage you to work with the engineer for the development team as well as Public Works staff and hopefully at least answer some questions. With that being said, though, this development as a whole, the proposed residential and mixed-use office commercial lots are master plan compliant, so I don't want to provide false hope that while we are working through some issues and the reason for the layover, the general layout and proposed uses of the development are acceptable and master plan compliant. So I do just want to set that table as well. So I guess I'll leave it at that unless there's any specific questions for me. Staff recommends layover.
Motion to lay. Motion to layover.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, we're gonna take agenda items number eleven and twenty-four together.
Okay.
Agenda item number eleven, case C ten dash twenty-five dash sixteen, C twelve dash twenty-five dash seventeen, applicant five hundred Skyline LLC, request preliminary plat approval of Chance Ridge Replat One, a subdivision inside and outside city limits with rezoning from AG, DR and CC to AG, DR, MH and CC, along with expansion of the ACI overlay for a portion of the site. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. Location northwest of Skyline Drive and West Dodge Road. Agenda item number twenty-four, case C seven dash twenty-five dash eighteen, applicant five hundred Skyline LLC, request approval of a conditional use permit to allow campground in the AG district. Portions of the property are located within the flood fringe and floodway overlay districts. Location northwest of Skyline Drive and West Dodge Road. Jim, you're up.
Matt, thanks, Mr. Chairman, board members, Jim Bouger, one zero two five zero Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant today. This is on recommendation for layover and we did have significant discussion at the pre-board meeting and we're agreeable to lay it over to address staff comments and to otherwise revise our application to comply with different zoning that's being requested by the planning department. So I think Mr. Moats is here on behalf of the homeowners and I'm guessing maybe that we're agreeable to layover today. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Any other proponents? Okay, seeing none, are there any opponents?
Rex Moats, one three one, South two oh two, on behalf of the opponents of the Whispering Oaks Homeowners Association, we have no objection to having it laid over at this point in time. It would be more productive since they're going to be doing a different application and modified application in the interest of efficiency. I think it would be better to have them come back at a different time, so with that.
Okay, thanks, Rex. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any additional comments or questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
No, I'll just, obviously, we did spend a lot of time in the pre-meeting discussing this and I would just add that with the layover, depending on how quickly that resubmital can come in, we don't typically notify when it's on the next month. However, if there is a change in the application for the zoning tool that might be used, that would kick in the new notification requirement. So I just want to throw that out there that it is likely we will send new notices, but I guess if any neighbors or opposition have, or anybody have questions or comments and want to ask to make sure if it's on, whether it's on the February or a future meeting date, you can always check in with city staff. So regarding agenda item number eleven, staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to layover.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Regarding agenda item number twenty-four, which is the conditional use permit for the campground, staff recommends layover.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to layover, second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris? Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
I was corrected, in my notes, I had sixteen was still available, but it was left on consent, so. Okay, we're gonna move on. That's it for all the consent items. We're moving on to administrative meeting only, means there'll be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one is case C twelve dash twenty-four dash two thirty-four, applicant Dunham House Inc., request final plat approval of Dunham House, a subdivision inside city limits. Location seventy-eight oh eight North Sixtieth Street. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the final plat, which is consistent with the approved preliminary plat with one note. The previous recommendation report, which was supported by the city and the planning board, condition number ten was struck from the approval of the preliminary plat by city council, so that is no longer applicable. And that was related to the naming of the street, the east-west street that comes off of Sixtieth Street. So everything else is consistent. Of course, this is a assisted living facility for wounded warriors, of course, a great project to provide housing for those and facilities for those individuals needing care. Staff recommends approval of the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to city council.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the final plat subject to submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding request to city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number five, case C three dash twenty-five dash seven, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Carnation Place TIF redevelopment project plan. Location twenty-seven eleven North Twenty-Fourth Street and Don, you're up.
Yeah, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The Carnation Place project involves a locally landmark historic building on North Twenty-Fourth Street, important to the cultural and historic aspects of the neighborhood, very important building to the neighborhood, known as the Carnation Ballroom. This is a one-story brick building, it's been vacant for many years and it has suffered some serious deterioration over, over those years of vacancy. The building is about six thousand two hundred square feet in size. It will undergo a substantial comprehensive rehabilitation and it will become a multi-tenant commercial structure with space available for retail or restaurant and/or public assembly space. Building, I'm not sure if I may, show a couple pictures of the building. The building is located in an extremely blighted area, means it will be able to have a twenty-year TIF term. The developer is Swan Development LLC, managed by Bentley Swan. Total investment in the neighborhood with this project is close to two point four million dollars. The request for TIF support is two hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars in TIF program support. Project meets the criteria of our TIF program, it's an appropriate land use for the area. Be nice to see this locally landmark historic building that has been unused, put to good use, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, Ben Swan, three five one five Hawthorne Avenue. We purchased the Carnation Ballroom early twenty seventeen, kind of in coordination with a heart bombing by the organization then operating as Restoration Exchange in Omaha. Became aware of its historical, cultural significance for the North Twenty-Fourth Street community. Have learned a lot about the building since that time. James Brown played there twice, BB King, Ray Charles, Fats Domino, what a, what a cultural treasure for our community and part of the, the story that North Twenty-Fourth Street can use to attract people to a potentially bright future. Appreciate the opportunity to use TIF on this. Swan Development, we have twenty commercial tenants in our family and we focus on placemaking, creating communities, having, you know, uplifting businesses that strengthen the fabric of the neighborhood. And this would be a great property to help make clean, well-lit, safe, have upstanding businesses that could serve the neighborhood. I'm here for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Eric, did you want to add anything?
Couldn't say it better than Don and Ben's, so I'll just go with recommend approval.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number six, case C three dash twenty-five dash eight, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of the Popleton Project East TIF redevelopment project plan. Location twenty-nine eleven Popleton Avenue. And it's you again, Don.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning Department. The Popleton East Project is an affordable housing redevelopment project, residential infill in the central part of the city. It's on a vacant lot located at Twenty-Ninth and Popleton Avenue. This is an affordable housing project. It'll be a four and five-story tall apartment building with fifty-one units. The, there's a rendering. The funding for this project is fairly complex. It includes low-income housing tax credits, ARPA funds, some city home funds, so the city is indeed kind of a partner in this project. Those are all included in the project. Subsidies are required if you're gonna build new housing and have it be affordable housing. And this is affordable housing. Some of these units will be available to income-qualified households that are at or below forty percent of the area median income, so that's a very low income. And other units will be available for households at or below fifty percent of the area median income, which is also a very low income. Again, this is a project that is within an extremely blighted area, so it'll have a twenty-year TIF term. The developer is Income and Housing Corporation. It's managed by Christian Gray and the projects have been represented by Cheryl Garst. They also own a larger parcel to the west of this site that's also vacant. That's not part of this project, but we can anticipate that this applicant will be coming back later for additional approvals, for additional development on that parcel. But we're looking at the east parcel in the yellow here. The total investment of this project is about nineteen point two million dollars in the neighborhood. The TIF support is seven hundred and five thousand, eight hundred eighty-three dollars. And this project also meets the required criteria of the city's TIF program, it's been approved by the TIF committee, it's an appropriate land use for the area, complies with the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Don, any other proponents?
Cheryl Garst of Income and Housing Development Corporation. Sorry, I was just getting one thing up here. Yep. I had a nice picture for you on laptop and of course it went dead as I came up here. No. Again, it's a fifty-one unit, a housing development corporation. Income and Housing Development Corporation is a subsidiary of Income and Community Development, who's been in the Omaha metro for the past twenty years. Even, I had a nice picture to show you of our community engagement. It's very important to our community development subsidiary and we were very active and that's what happened with the subsidiary of Income and Housing Development Corporation for this particular project. So there was heavy engagement with this. It will be an area median income of forty to eighty percent, so people making about twenty-three thousand dollars to sixty-five thousand dollars a year. We hope to start construction very soon and really appreciate the staff recommendation and support and your support with the planning unit residential redesignation for this site. It's been a vacant lot for many years and passed up by many private developers. We're excited to tackle this on for a very dense neighborhood here in Omaha.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, obviously, this board and the city recognizes the importance and challenges of providing affordable housing, so we're excited about this project. It had previously gone through entitlements through planning board and council, including the PUR overlay. So staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Tondal?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven, case C three dash twenty-five dash ten, applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha, request approval of a CRA designation, location southwest of Seventy-second and Hickory Streets. And Don, you're up again.
Yeah, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This agenda item asks the planning board to recommend designation of a portion of the city as a community redevelopment area or CRA. The purpose of designating something as a CRA is that it opens up the availability of the TIF program, tax increment financing, for redevelopment projects in the area. And by designating something as a CRA, we are looking to help assist and stimulate redevelopment of the area. And just to put it in context here, all of the lavender areas are existing community redevelopment areas. The yellow area is the area you'll be considering for designation today. We launched this CRA study in response to a request from Urban Village Development Group. They're working to redevelop a vacant, bedraggled, former hotel building at about 73rd and Cedar Streets. We use census geography to conduct these CRA studies. What you see in this map is the entire census tract of Census tract 6806. We focused in on, with our CRA study, one block group, and that's one bounded by the green here to the lower right. And that's Census Block Group Three. I would note that there is a study in your packets and available online for the public that goes into great detail on the criteria and process we used to evaluate this area for CRA designation. I show you a picture of the vacant hotel. But its pipes have burst, it's in bad shape. Transients have gotten into it. Presently, it is a public safety concern and issue. In any event... It's a more detailed map. In any event, to be designated as a community redevelopment area, the area we designate needs to comply with two definitions in state law. And those definitions are laid out in detail in full in that study that I mentioned, which also lays out the criteria and requirements of meeting those definitions. And it also lays out how this particular area complies with those criteria. The terms used in state law are blighted and substandard, and you have those definitions in that study. This area that we are recommending for designation does indeed meet both of those definitions. In terms of the definition of blighted Part B, the area we're recommending for designation has a per capita income of about $15,600. That's much lower than the city's per capita income of $40,000. The unemployment rate in Block Group Three is 19.46%. That exceeds 120% of the statewide unemployment rate, which is 3.07. 120% is a 3.68. That's the threshold. And the age of the structures in the area exceeds 40 years. The age of the structures is about 50 years. Again, we did the study using primarily Census Block Group Three, and we found that it does comply with both definitions. But we don't necessarily have to designate the entire area. What we've done here is we've excluded a single-family residential area of about 32 homes from the area we are recommending for designation. We excluded a hospital medical campus, and we also excluded the cemetery. None of those really represent redevelopment opportunities. So it's the area in yellow that we are recommending for designation as a CRA, community redevelopment area, primarily the eastern half of Block Group Three. We found that it also meets the definition of substandard and the blighted Part A, which are all related to the physical nature of the area for a number of reasons. I would note, while this building is a bit of a hazard, overall, the physical conditions in the area really do not stand out as being visually blighted. However, the buildings are more than 50 years old and have a degree of age, age-related obsolescence. The infrastructure is older, shows some wear and needs updating. And the overall street system has a lot of dead ends, poor connectivity, and in many areas, lack sidewalks. So that's how the recommended area meets both definitions. Now, when we did the CRA study, we also looked at extremely blighted area designation and the criteria. And we found... Excuse me a moment. Got a bit of a cold. I'm dried out, sorry. There are two numeric criteria for an extremely blighted area designation. One is poverty rate. The area has to exceed 20%. And the other is the unemployment rate. And to be extremely blighted, you have to exceed 200% of the state rate. This area actually does both, but we are not recommending it for EBA designation because we feel it's kind of an anomaly. The area has a concentration of senior living facilities. It's really kind of an unusual concentration. It tends to skew the data. And if we look at a map of existing extremely blighted areas, we see that the study area is well over three miles away from any of the closest EBAs. So we feel it's an outlier. So we're recommending approval of the CRA designation, but not a EBA designation. That's our presentation. Thank you.
Don, just a quick question for you, Don.
Yes, sir.
As regards to the income levels there that you're looking at. It doesn't look like there's too many households within that Block Group Three area. How many households were... Do you know? Do you have that number?
Good question. I don't know the number of households off the top of my head, but there's a lot of multifamily development in that area. Let me zoom in a little. And remember that when we did the study, we looked at the entirety of the block group.
The entire...
Block Group Three is the study area.
Okay, that includes Block Group Two?
So we had these 32 single-family homes.
Okay, so you're looking at all of those, not just Block Group Three?
No.
Okay.
I'm looking at just Block Group Three, which is this area in the green. So in terms of the number of households, we've got 32 single-family homes here. This is a very large apartment complex. And then these other buildings, about five of them. There's a hospice, assisted senior living, and a nursing home. About five different multifamily buildings. So there's a lot of households there.
And are the senior living... Senior living would probably be considered residence.
They'd be considered like apartments, yeah. Well, the hospice residents are counted by the census as residents of the Census Block Group.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
I'm just trying to figure out if there's a good representation for the qualifiers that exist.
Well, the way the boundaries of block groups are set up to begin with is that the Census Bureau tries to get a certain threshold of population of households, of people, in each block group. So it wouldn't be an unusually low concentrate or number of households compared to other Census Block Groups.
It wouldn't.
They try to keep a consistent size with block groups. In fact, if the density gets too much, they'll actually split a block group into two. But that's kind of unusual.
All right, thanks.
Any other proponents?
Good afternoon, members of the board. David Levy, Baird Home Wafters, 1700 Farnham Street, here on behalf of Urban Village. While this is an application technically of the city and deals with an area quite a bit larger, about 70 acres. My client, Urban Village, is the one who brought this to the city, this request to the city. They are proposing to redevelop the building Don referenced as bedraggled. Good use of that word, and it's accurate for that building. That's the former Embassy Suites or then I think it was a DoubleTree there just north of the Drover. That is vacant, and it is definitely in need of redevelopment. Again, this is not about that particular project, but since they made the request, I wanted to tell you just a little bit about the project that they're looking at. They would redevelop that building into 195 one-bedroom apartment units, ranging in size from 550 to 650 square feet. So truly, one-bedroom apartments, rents ranging from just under $1,000 a month to about $1,250 a month. So market rate, but very affordable in that regard. Estimated total project costs or investment there that they're looking at is about $23.5 million. So again, this is a different question than that project, but I thought it was important to tell you a little bit about that. I think Don said it well, and the planning department, I think, did a very thorough job on the study. And as you heard from Don, it meets all of the criteria in state law. The only other thing I would add is that one of the things that's required is a public meeting, a community meeting, when you're going through this process. The city did hold that, and I attended that meeting a few weeks ago at Mammoth Hall at UNO. And there was nobody there at that time who was opposed to this. There was good attendance, 10, 12 people, something like that, good questions, good discussion of housing and tax increment financing, but no real opposition or concern to the designation of this area as a community redevelopment area at that time. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, and thank you for consideration. Hopefully, you'll move this forward with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Gen. Item number eight, case C3-25-23. Applicant Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha requests approval of an amendment to Chapter 55 zoning regarding adoption of new firm panels and flood insurance studies within the city's flood plain regulations. Location, City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction.
Yes, I'll handle that, this request, on the city's behalf. So yeah, this has been a long time coming. This is as Omaha's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. The flood plain maps that are assigned to Omaha as well as all of the cities and jurisdictions across our country are led by FEMA at the national level. So there's coordination from FEMA, the state of Nebraska, the local NRD, as well as City of Omaha, and of course, other participating cities and jurisdictions around the metropolitan area. So this would update flood maps that could either be an increase or a decrease on certain parcels throughout our city, impacting thousands of properties. So we are required to adopt these maps, which would become effective on March 25. This has been a several-year process. There's a timeline that's listed in the recommendation report, and I won't go through all those details, but there was an official notification about the release of the maps dating back to December of 2021. Leading into that next year, a few items to note. There was two public open houses held, one at the Papio Missouri River NRD, and the second one at UNO's campus. That was in the summer, in June of 2022. There was a 90-day appeal period, which there were some appeals that were coordinated with the local NRD to submit those to FEMA here in our city. And then the letter of final determination just came out this past September 25, notifying us of the required approval and adoption of these maps in a six-month timeframe. So the code amendment basically updates the effective dates of when the flood insurance studies were done, as well as panel numbers, which, not to get into details, we have 83 panel numbers that cover our entire city and jurisdiction. 70 of those panels are being updated with new flood maps. The other 13 have older effective dates. So we need the support on this. This is not an option for us to remain in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. So... But if you have any questions, I'm here to help the best that I can.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions?
Recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Roseacker?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Tondel?
Yes.
Soto Longo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Soto Longo, could you repeat your vote?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay. We're going to take Gen. Items 12 and 21 together. Gen. Item number 12, case C10-25-19. See 12-25-20. Applicant View 174 LLC. Request preliminary and final plat approval of View 174, a minor plat inside city limits with rezoning from AG to R6, along with expansion of the MCC overlay. Location, 17515 Pacific Street. Gen. Item number 21, case C11-25-21. Applicant View 174 LLC. Request approval of a PUD, Planned Unit Development Overlay District. Location, 17515 Pacific Street. And Jim, you're up again.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Playing Board members. Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle, here on behalf of the applicant today, View 174 LLC. I also have with me today Kyle Vole from E&amp;A Consulting, Willie Douglas from Summit Real Estate Group, and Eric Booth as well from Summit. This is on application for preliminary and final plat of a multifamily project at 175th and Pacific Street.
Jim, could you push that up further?
Up? Okay.
Click it in a place. Keep going. And then maybe zoom out on the top. Thank you.
All right. Cool. Okay, so yeah, 175th and Pacific. Summit had also developed a project just down the street at 178th and Pacific, a very similar multifamily project. This one does vary a little bit in that it does have some townhome units as a component on the west and south side. So you'll see that the townhome units on the west side and on the south side of the project, the center of the core of the project is a more traditional multifamily project, similar to what you see at 178th and Pacific. So we do have preliminary and final plat today, rezoning ag to R6 with an expansion of the MCC overlay. And then there's a PUD that goes along with this as well, which is a separate Gen. Item. It's an 8.3-acre site. There's 30 townhome units programmed, and then 90 conventional apartment units in the core. One thing I would note, this site plan is actually a little different than what we submitted with the application. We received some staff comments on our application and included some landscape requirements that we did not include in our initial submitted. So this drawing was updated, and you can see that both on the south and west side, we've added landscaping that complies with the code requirements. And additionally, we also pulled back the townhome units out so that the patio areas are outside the buffer, the landscape buffer area. So again, those were just a couple of minor comments that Kyle and his team went back and updated the site plan, and we did have enough land there to be able to fit in all that. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. I know that some of the neighbors are here, and I don't think that they've seen the landscape plan. So hopefully, that will address some of their concerns that they might have, but we'll be happy we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Jim, any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? If you're an opponent and you plan to speak, you can come, go ahead and come down front if you'd like to. That'll help speed things up, so.
I'd like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak today.
Name and address, please.
My name is Sandy Yaman, and I live at 1227 South 176th Avenue Circle.
Would you say your first name again?
Sandy Yaman.
Sandy, okay.
I live just west of the development. My property will directly coincide with the property at the top of the hill. I actually have two yards. I have a small yard that's lower, and then our property goes all the way up to the church property at this point. We have had, we've been there 20 years. Our property is 22 years old. We have continually, every year, had a drainage problem where the water from the top of the hill continually runs down into our yard. It has eroded the area around our trees, to the point where we're in the process right now of making some changes. I need some sort of a assurance that with all of this property going in up there, that the water's not going to continue to run down into our yard. It makes our yard in the springtime unusable. Thank you.
Okay, Sandy. Any other opponents?
Hi. Mr. Chairman and members, thanks for letting us speak today. I'm Cindy Bradfield. This is my husband, Andy. We are the property owners at 17416 Poppleton Avenue. We back up this property. Our backyard is directly behind the involved proposed development, and I'm here representing multiple homeowners that back up this property, both along Poppleton Avenue on the south side, and also the Villas to the west. The three main points I want to discuss today are: Number one, is there any ability to move the apartments and townhomes any further than the 38 to 40-foot from our property line? Number two, a robust landscape buffer yard plan designed by a landscape architect to include a minimum of three-inch caliber trees and a guarantee that the long needle pines to the west of the property lines will not be removed? And number three, we request a fence or a fence allowance for the homeowners to maintain our privacy and security. There's many references in the documents about, you know, to the Omaha Master Plan, and we do feel like our ideas are in direct, you know, reflection of the Omaha Master Plan with two principles, Green Omaha and Neighborhood Omaha. And Neighborhood Omaha means the preservation and enhancement of the city's residential neighborhoods. Even though you've all visited the property, I brought some photos today to refresh your memory of what we see every day, and I'm showing my age here, that I graduated from Miller North in 1986. I didn't realize you had this technology, and I put things on poster board, so.
I like it.
So, this is behind our fence line, and this just shows...
Cindy, for the sake of the recording, I'll still have you speak at the microphone. Maybe if your husband would like to hold those?
Yeah, Andy.
Thank you.
And which, we're looking what direction right there?
So this is looking from our backyard, looking north.
Okay.
And John Kramer, who's here today, lives right next to us. His home is represented where it shows there's some existing landscaping here. That's his landscaping. So you can see in this photo, John put a post 30 feet behind our property lines. So that just shows how close 30 feet is. So I'm really appreciative that the developer did say they found some room, you know, to put the patios outside of that 30 feet, but I still think this shows just how little a 30-foot landscaping buffer yard is, you know, because there's not a lot of natural trees. So I'll grab another photo. Where'd they, oh, sorry. Do you have them all?
Yeah, they're up here.
Here. Sorry. So this is a photo of our backyard, and...
Now we're looking south.
Now you're looking south into our backyards from the property under proposed development, and you can just see how bare it is. And I sent ahead of time on December 27th, and now that I know you have this, I didn't make a poster of this, but I sent, you know, pictures from other properties around the city, just showing like this one. If you see the Broadmoor Apartments, 185th and Dodge, like it's way bigger than 30-foot, you know, from those homes. There's a lot of natural tree line already. So our ask is that because there's not already a lot of natural tree line that's mature along our properties, that we see if there's anything else that could be done as far as the distance from our homes. So I know there's 115-foot easement for noise buffer from Pacific Street. I'm not sure who that benefits or what's that about, but is there any ability to move this whole property and shift it even further than like the 40-foot from our property lines, given that it will take years for these trees to have any, you know, barrier at all between our Spring Ridge neighborhood homes and this development? So that's number one. Can we get any more of a setback than only the 40 feet now? And again, really appreciative that they did find at least the space to move those patios outside of the 30-foot. Our second request is the robust landscape buffer yard. We want that designed by a landscape architect to include a minimum of three-inch caliber trees and a guarantee that the long needle pines to the west of the property are not You can see... This is a picture of the View 178 development by the same developers to the west of one of the circles that's impacted by this development. And you can see that with the city's requirement, and they mentioned here that they're going to do the city's requirement of one tree every 500 square feet. Well, in a 30-foot landscape buffer, that means one tree every 16 feet. These are the trees that were planted two years ago at View 178. I just took this photo last month. You can see from the photo, they would do nothing to help, you know, block, you know, or protect or have any type of landscape buffer yard between the Spring Ridge neighborhood and this development. And again, now that I know you have this technology, here's the photos. These are the trees that were planted every 16 feet at View 178. This was the existing fence that was already on this side of the Villas between the 30, this is 30 feet from this apartment building to this fence, and those are the trees that were planted. The people that live here already had all those natural trees, but as you can see from the photos, a lot of us don't, there's nothing at all. I won't live to see the day that these trees would provide any buffer at all. So that's point number two. The city did recommend that the, you know, that they work with the landscape architect to improve the landscaping at the Lakeside Hills Park. We think that that much intention should be placed on the landscape buffer yard between our homes and the apartment and the townhomes, because it's just as important, and it does, you know, benefit Green Omaha. So that was point number two. We do think that a professional landscape architect, you know, that that would give us enough maybe trees, bushes, everything to prevent this from just being an extension of the apartment, like, you know, it shouldn't be a recreation area, it should be a landscape buffer, and that is our ask. For the third request, we request a fence or a fence allowance erected this year in 2025. In the last few years to the west of our neighborhood, there's already been a lot of development, and includes the addition of a daycare, 96 apartments, which is View 178, an assisted living facility, and now to the east of the Spring Ridge Villas and to the north of the homes on Poppleton, there's, you know, going to be another 120 units. There are two schools within three blocks of this property, and I don't know about you, but if I'm a kid and I need to walk to school, I am, I'm not going to go around. I'm going to walk through the yards, and that's why we're asking for some type of a fence or fence allowance, because of the distance to getting to schools shouldn't be through private properties. Also, not to be overlooked, the average age of the residents in the Spring Ridge Villas that are to the west of this proposed development is 75, and nearly half are now widows and living alone. And so a fence, you know, we're not being antagonistic, but we're just trying to protect the privacy and security of the people that currently live around this apartment development. Ultimately, our ask is that a fence or fence allowance be given due to all these factors, and also to help us to shield from the noise of the construction that will be going on for two years. This photo, goes the other way. This was just the other day in our backyards. They were doing soil testing. This is how obtrusive the trucks and everything looks from our vantage point. This is looking onto the property from our backyards. So in conclusion, the developers are buying a premier piece of land that will make them a lot of money. So our request is that if this moves forward, that they do a significant amount of work upfront to make it a more compatible with our neighborhood. If you don't feel like you can make this approval conditional upon our recommendations today, which is a 55 to 60-foot setback from our property lands, property lines, a robust landscaping plan for that 30-foot landscape buffer, and a six-foot wide vinyl privacy fence or fence allowance to be paid for by the developer, then we would ask that you lay over this request so that the developer has more time to address these issues, so that we can make this a mutually beneficial project for all parties involved, the developer, the neighborhood, and the city. Thank you for your time.
Cindy, was there a neighborhood meeting with the development team?
Yes, there was.
Did you bring these questions up with them then?
So when, yep, when we had our meeting, we talked about, well, again, we had one meeting, right? And we didn't realize, just everything kind of hit us at once, right? So we went to the meeting, yeah. We went to the meeting. A fence was asked about at that meeting, and it wasn't clear to us about the landscaping plan. And then not until we saw the city's documents that you put online on December 31st, which we just accessed, did we learn that the, you know, every 500 square feet is what's required? And so I guess that's what I would say here is, if this is all that's required, I think you can see visually that's not enough, at least from our vantage point. So we did, we did attend the meeting, and we did express some concerns about the distance from our homes, the fence and the landscaping. And I don't know if you guys, you took notes? I mean, you know, and Kyle did reach out yesterday to let us know some of these changes, and that's why I said I was very glad to see that the patios at least won't be encroaching upon that 30-foot, but if it could be any further, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say no to that.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's what we'd like to see. I don't know what this is for these, yeah.
Cindy, we'll give Kyle a chance to come up.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your time and questions.
Any other opponents? Are there any other opponents, or is that it?
We all...
Okay, all right, gotcha.
Not wasting time.
All right, thank you. Well, thank you, appreciate that. All right, well, Cindy did a good job, so. Close the public hearing. Jim, Kyle, did either one of you guys want to come up and address?
Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. I probably will let Kyle address. Most of these questions are sort of engineering design related questions, so I'll let Kyle answer most of them. But Cindy, you're going to live to see these trees. I, I'm four years older than you, and I would hope that I lived to see them, so. Just wanted to make sure.
Kyle Vole, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'll start off with Sandy's question. Sandy had the question around about the water runoff to the west. So currently, their existing parking lot, where the parking lot's at for the church currently, it's from the back of curb of that parking lot west drains towards her property. With what we're doing and the grading we're doing, we're minimizing that drainage area. There still will be some, because we're saving those existing evergreen trees, the existing long needle pines, there still is going to be from that root zone west that will continue to drain that way, but we're reducing the footprint by approximately half as far as the drainage area that was going to the west. So that, that should help with her, with her current runoff situation. It's not going to alleviate all of the runoff, but that condition won't change. We're taking all of our stormwater east to a detention basin, so we'll capture our roof drains and everything, and that'll all run east to the detention basin to the east and thus reduce the watershed that's currently draining towards her property. And then to clarify...
The church that's there now, does their runoff of their roof, does that head towards...
It's kind of, I would say most of that probably goes north towards the Pacific Street ditch.
Okay.
Most of it does. And then there's the, the parking lot has a swale that, it just kind of goes, I'm sorry, north and south, but the curb line itself or, it's west of the parking area that currently is flowing west.
On your plan, point to where Sandy's house, or her lot?
I'm not 100% sure, but it's...
It's not one, one farther down. Keep going. About right there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
As far as the, the ability to move the product north, or the entire project north, we do have the noise attenuation easement, which there's no habitable structures, including garages permitted in that noise attenuation easement. So we have everything pushed as far north as we can have it. The east side of the site is predominantly grade, because we still have a lot of grade to get up to this, this padside elevation. So right now, we have minimized or maximized the site as far as the ability to shift everything north and still keep the unit count and the finances working. And we've, that also includes the driveways or the 25-foot, which is the minimum for fire access, so I don't have the ability to narrow that any further. There was a question on the, the tree plantings. So I did not do this design, but a landscape architect in my office did. So this adds, I added it up, I had 59 of these trees that are along the perimeter. So you've got the larger deciduous canopy trees, but the smaller in diameter are all different coniferous trees. I'll list the species included here. Colorado blue spruce, black hill spruce, Van der Wolf pine, and fir. So there's 59 of those trees that are with the coniferous, keeping their needles all year round to screen year-round that west and south property line, in addition to the tree canopy.
All along the west and the south?
That's correct. And those are spec'd to be six to seven-foot in height. So that would be, the planted height would be six to seven-foot trees. The current caliper on the, the current plan is a two-inch caliper, which is kind of your nursery standard that you get, that you see for the most part, and that's also typically what the city requires for tree mitigation, is a two-inch caliper.
You're going to intermix the deciduous trees and the pine trees and...
Correct. To have both an understory and an overstory type screening, that's correct.
That's pretty good coverage.
And then, I believe that's everything...
Just a side question, I guess, for you, having done this for a little while. Typically, when you, when you space a tree, it's based on the ultimate canopy of a tree. If you put them too close, then it's hard on the trees, the trees don't thrive.
That's correct.
And they end up not performing the way they're supposed to, right? So...
That's correct. So what, what Matt, my LA, has done is he has staggered these trees, so that you're still getting that visual barrier, but in doing that staggering, that slight shift north and south, these are, would be a full-growth footprint for those trees, but you're getting a, from a view from the due south, for example, you're, by staggering those, you're still getting that screening effect, but allowing room for those trees to grow to their full mature height.
Do you know what kind of deciduous trees they're...
I do. Red oaks, skyline locusts, hackberries, Kentucky coffee trees, which are all in the city-approved tree species.
Can I ask a question? No, sir.
I believe that it was everything that I can help out with.
I think the only other question they had was on fencing, so I don't know if you're going to address that or not, but I don't think that we have anything kind of...
Yeah, we've, we've had some discussions on fencing. We haven't finalized that. There are some existing fences that are along both the south and west property lines, and of course, they're not the same make and type, and so it's not quite as easy as just... And so it's not quite as easy as just having a uniform look and tying into those fences, per se. But that's something that we will have to continue to, to review and take a look at.
I got distracted for just a minute. Cindy asked about fence. Did you address fence? Okay, I got, I was distracted, I'm sorry. What'd you say about fence?
So for fencing, right now, we have had some conversations about fencing. The initial thought was to try to go with the visual landscaping screening buffer, because we were thinking of it more from a visual, the visual screening versus the trespassing, per se, possibility. There are three or four different types of existing fences that are, the residents have their own fences in some of those, on some of those lots. Black wrought iron, for example, there's a white PVC. And so trying to intermatch, match those styles or not do an entire fence all the way along the entire south property and then have this kind of no man's land gap between the two fences is not ideal either. We haven't come to a conclusion yet as far as what we want to do with the fencing yet, I guess. Still open to, to consideration on that.
But you're willing to keep lines of communication open with the neighbors and?
He's the check writer, so. I don't want to answer for that, and then, yeah, it looks like he said yes.
Well, it's always healthy, just to keep those lines of communication.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Sir, did you have a quick question? Come on up, I'll allow you to come up if you can do it quickly and... You have to give your name and address. No, that's alright. That's alright.
Hi, I'm John Kramer. I live at 17410 Poppleton Avenue. The area that says existing landscaping to remain, I guess. My only question was, when, you know, when you talk about a tree, whatever height, if you, if you create a raised berm first, and I think we talked about this at the meeting, the original meeting with the homeowners, and I don't know if all the homeowners are interested in that, but, but most of our properties come out and then they drop down to, to what's proposed here. And I think there's enough space there. When they do the grading, they're taking out a significant amount of dirt that if they could create a berm before their, their properties are built, those trees would have a lot more elevation and would have more benefit in Cindy's lifetime. And so that was just something I would recommend if it, if it fits the neighbor's interest and the developer's ability.
Okay, thank you. Kyle, did you want to address that?
Sure, just real quick.
Yeah, go ahead and come on up. Give your name and address.
Kyle Hall, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I think where we have the ability to berm, where we're not trapping water or creating a drainage issue, that's certainly something that we can do. There's a couple spots where the, the lots to the south are actually sitting up higher than what the grade of the patios that we're going to be constructing are. And so it's tough to build a berm on a four-to-one, five-to-one slope. But where we can berm in and not create any water issues, that's certainly something we can incorporate.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional comments or questions?
I have an additional question. Can I ask another question?
I, I'm going to decline that. Sandy, I already let you come up and speak, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
Yeah, so... This project's utilizing the more restrictive of the R5, R6 regulators in conjunction with the, the PUD. So, you know, it was briefly mentioned earlier in the meeting, but, but basically it takes the, as, as I just said, the more restrictive of either R5 or R6. Typically, it's the R5 requirements limiting the height of the structures to, you know, what the adjacent single-family homes, what they could build their homes to. It, it has a lower building and impervious coverage, but also really the, the number of units that could be built there. The benefit of the R6 is it does provide these landscape buffer yards that if it was a straight R5 zoning, there would not be a requirement of, of the buffer yard. So there is, there is benefit when we use the combination of these two zoning districts. So, you know, any conversation about a fence? I just want to point out and put on the record, I know Jim and I spoke about this a couple days ago, but the buffer yard requirements, if it's a privacy fence that's being built on the subject site, that would have to be on the inside of any required buffer yard trees or the, the depth of the buffer yard, okay? So if there was a privacy fence, it would have to be built closer to the units, not to the adjacent residential properties. If it's a 50% open fence or a wrought iron fence, a picket fence, that could be built, you know, or placed as close to the property line as zoning codes would allow. So I just want to point that out. When there is discussion about, you know, potential fencing, you could not do a privacy fence right at the property line on this property. Now, if it was on the adjacent single-family homes, you know, if they agreed to that, that could be done, but just wanted to point that out. A few mentions about the noise attenuation easement. We do have Ryan Haas from Public Works that could get into more of the specifics, but the, that requirement is something that we do with all new residential developments in this part of our city. And what that does is it plays into any future street widening or street projects. So, you know, Pacific Street at some point will be, will be widened or there will be a project at some point in the future. I don't know when, time-wise, that would happen. I know it's, it's a little ways off and, but there's, you know, it's included in the capital improvement program of the city, but that, you know, that goes out between one and six years and sometimes projects get pushed back. But, for example, if Pacific Street were widened, and I think it plays into whether there's any financial dollars that go into those projects. The feds require basically a certain distance of whether a noise wall goes in or not. So we do not support any modification of that noise attenuation. I don't know, you know, what the setbacks are in the adjacent neighborhoods to the east or west. So, you know, I'm not here to say there's going to be a noise wall in the future or not, but that conversation about providing that distance in human habitation is, is for that reasoning. No, if I have much else to say. Obviously, we have not had a chance to review this new site plan, but we'll continue to coordinate and work with the applicant to make sure that they are providing the adequate number of, of tree plantings, you know, the appropriate setbacks, everything that's identified in the two recommendation reports. You know, it, when we put together our reports, we base it off on the zoning code or other applicable codes, subdivision code, other regulations that the city follows. Of course, if the applicant wants to work with property owners and go above and beyond, we're not opposed to that, but that would not be part of our recommendation. It hasn't been brought up. There's a few comments about some, few primary materials and primarily the Pacific, Pacific Street-facing facades, whether it's the back of those garages or units based on the MCC overlay. So we'll have to coordinate with the applicant on those items. Unless there's any other questions, of course, the board can have conversations. We would make a recommendation for Agenda Item 12 for approval of the rezoning from AG to R6, approval of the expansion of the MCC overlay, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 11 conditions, and approval of the final plat subject to compliance with preliminary plat, and submittal of a final subdivision agreement.
Do we have a motion?
I like a motion to approve the rezoning from AG to R6, approval of the expansion of the MCC overlay, approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 11 conditions of staff report, and approval of final plat subject to compliance with conditions of preliminary plat, plat approval, and submittal of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Tondell?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Regarding Agenda Item 21, which is the PUD, which does lock down plans, we don't specifically list out the conditions, but it is a requirement that those are met of what's being mentioned in the recommendation report prior to City Council. So staff recommends approval of the PUD overlay district subject to submittal of acceptable final PUD plans prior to City Council.
Do we have a motion?
PUD overlay district subject to submittal of acceptable final PUD plans prior to forwarding this request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondell?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Rosacker?
I'm going to say yes, but I just want to commend both the applicant and the neighbors for the cooperative attitude and, and working to find something nice for the neighborhood.
Pete?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Thank you all for coming down. Yeah, I'm going to do minutes first. Do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Tondell? Moore? Morris? Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, election of officers. Do we have a nomination for chairman?
I nominate Mike Pete for chairman.
We have a nomination, we have a motion and, or a nomination and a second. I'll get it spit out here sooner or later. Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondell?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
First of all, thank you for the confidence. And thank you Chairman Rosebaum for your years as chairman. Six years or so, done a fantastic job and be a hard act to follow, but thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank all of you guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Do we have a nom-? Go ahead, Dave, I'm sorry. Were you going to make that nomination?
No, somebody else.
Okay. Do we have a nomination for vice chairman?
I move Pat Morris for vice chair.
I'll second just to get a vote here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondell?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris? Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.
Okay, before I ask for a motion for adjournment, I wanted to tell you guys, this is my final meeting. I am, what, 15 years, three, not, three times I've done this, and I'm declined to go for another term. So this is my final meeting. I want to say thank you to all of you guys for making this an easy job to do. Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Mike, Kathy, Jennifer. My buddy Dave. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome very much.
I've worked for a few planning directors. Not to diminish anybody else's work and their dedication, but Dave's been the best planning director that I've worked for, and he's just a huge asset to the, to the city, so.
Thank you.
Ronald, thank you, bud. Thank you for, you've been here for a long time. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate it.
So Greg, thanks for the kind words. We kept a little secret for the last couple months because Greg didn't want a public goodbye, but it's not that public anymore, so we can say some good things about him, so.
I want to get a picture.
Plus, we are recording, yes, and we will get a picture. So Greg asked that we not tell you folks that he was planning on stepping down. It was a hard decision for Greg. I, I don't know, over the last handful of months, it was maybe not, maybe I will, maybe I won't. I said, you know, you don't have to be the chair if that helps. And in the end, he made the right decision for himself. Totally respect his decision. Greg, it's been a great 15 years. It's, we've done a lot of good things together. The department, the, the board itself, the administration. What I'm going to miss the most is Greg calls sometimes, often, sometimes not, but he'll get on a roll and we'll talk three, four times between meetings about certain things or just questions. And it, the conversations usually about what he's called about is takes about this much of time, and then we spend time talking about life, right? So we, we will have a new board member by the time the February meeting happens. It just has to get put on a City Council agenda, and I won't, I won't say who it is or what, who's filling the seat until it's official public record, but... So, yeah, Greg, go ahead. I'm not done.
Oh, okay, I thought you were done.
No, I'm not done, so. It's been a great 15 years. I've, I truly appreciate the support that you've shown me. So when you started, I was Mike Carter, right? I was the manager of current planning, so. You know, I appreciate.
And you wouldn't talk to me.
Well, you were from Elkhorn, so. Now I don't have to after this, so. I know. So we've, I've, I've worn a lot of hats during your time on the board, from a manager to assistant director, now to the director for the last almost eight years now. So I, I appreciate all the support you always gave me. You always supported me in whatever role I was in. You've always supported the department, most of the time, except for annexations. But there was always respect and, 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 and I'm not talking about other board members, I'm talking about you. You always showed us respect, and that always meant a lot to me. And I'm going to miss seeing you every month. I hope you still call and with questions. And from a personal note, here I go. I can't thank you enough for the support that you showed me, and especially my family. Not me, I appreciate it for myself, but the support you showed my family six years ago, I will remember that till the day I leave this earth. I, I love you, Greg.
Thanks.
I consider you a close friend, and I hope you stay in touch. Thank you very much.
I will. The one thing I did want to say, one last thing I did want to say was, you know, when I go around the city, I hear every now and then a criticism of the planning department or planning board. You know, we've been known sometimes as a rubber-stamp board, you know? And I, I take it, and when I walk away, I'm not, I don't mean it in a mean-spirited way, but I'm thinking to myself, those comments are out of ignorance. They don't realize what you guys do on this board, how hard you work, and they don't realize how hard the planning department works, everybody but Dave, but how hard the planning department works and how hard Jennifer, that we don't think, you know, she's here, but she's paying attention and overseeing. She's doing everything she can to make certain we don't step on our own toes here at any time. So Jennifer, thank you for, for doing that at all these years. But, yeah, don't let anybody tell you that this isn't a great board and that it isn't a great planning department. And boy, I tell you, the work we've all done when you walk down the city of Omaha and consider what it was 30 years ago and what it looks like now, and that's because of the planning department and the planning board. What a difference we've made in this city, so. Congratulations on all the work you guys have done. And it's been a, a true pleasure to work with you guys, so. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I think we're done with everything, aren't we?
Got to get a picture.
Yeah, we got to get a picture. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Tondell?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven to zero.